Need to get going. Okay, we are going to go to action item 56. Because I understand that we've... Keith, is that... are you Keith?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness. You've been...
(laughing).
Okay, so as we move over to action item 56, this is actually a discussion on a designation for the north entrance or exit to Steel Falls subdivision as emergency only. And Keith, you actually sent a letter that's included in our packet. And I trust that council's had the opportunity to review that. This isn't a public hearing, but I will let you come forward real quickly and share just real quickly what your thoughts are. But go ahead and come forward to the...
What I'd like to do is just take a minute and have Larry come up. I want to show you a diagram of what has happened in the last four years in our development. Take us to the point where we're at today.
Okay.
Can you do that real quick?
Yes.
He's the (inaudible).
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll treat this a little bit like that, three minutes that we have ahead. So we'll just do it like that.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Graham, I live on Kay Lee Way, that's 10-500 Kay Lee Way.
Okay.
In Steel Falls subdivision, I've been a resident there for going on four years. And what we want to talk to you tonight about are two items that are of deep concern to residents of Steel Falls. We have a large senior population in the development, and they're concerned about two things. One is the speed limit on Cherry Lane. If you look at the diagram up there, the red line on the bottom connects between Middleton Road and Midland Boulevard, Middleton Boulevard and Midland Boulevard. There currently is a 50 mile an hour speed limit on that road. All right? Now, that speed limit, I believe, was established before Steel Falls was even developed at that time. Since that point in time, we've had development across, directly across from our entrance of a large apartment complex, 260 units there, 588 vehicles. We have also had, at the same time, the completion of St. Luke's Hospital in that area there. Recently, the city has approved the, for a large church to come in on the south side of Cherry Lane there. And there's going to be commercial development there. What we've got now is a very dangerous situation at our exit out of our development. It's very high-volume traffic, very fast traffic. We are asking for your support to help us get that speed limit changed and reduced to 35 miles an hour on Cherry Lane for that segment of the road right there. It's only going to get worse, it's not going to get better. So that's one of the items. The second item is referencing what we call the stub extension at the north end of our development. You see that little red line up there at the top? That's what's called the stub extension. And there's a pitch, another photo there if you can switch over to that one. This is basically what we have across that, that end of the road there in our development. If you could switch back to the other one. The, the black haze up there is the various roads within our development. It's designed such that it's not really a straight drive through the development. So people have to be careful when they're driving through there. But if you look to the north of there, on the number two segment there, the various developments that are in the process, either are completed or in the process of being completed in Caldwell, because the county line, the city line between Napa's border and Caldwell's border is where that black line runs across the top up there. And if you look at those, those three black marks going up there, they're the streets that are exiting onto Lassiter Street. That black line is Lassiter Street that currently runs right up to where the, the main long line there is, where Caldwell, right there on that spot. Now, the plans are, it's our understanding with the city of Caldwell, they're going to extend, and with Napa, I guess Napa owns half of that street also. They're going to extend Lassiter Street over to Midland Boulevard, which is going to happen. But what's going to happen here is we're going to end up with probably about six streets coming from Caldwell down to Lassiter. They're going to come over to where that red line is there, the stub street that we have in our development. And it's already being communicated with the neighbors on other subdivisions up there that, hey, this is going to be a great shortcut for us to get through, avoid Midland, avoid Middleton Road, get right to the marketplace, get to Costco, get a shortcut to get to the hospital. And our subdivision is not designed to handle that kind of traffic. It will be dangerous in there. We're going to experience a lot of turnover with the residents, they just aren't going to, they just aren't, not going to accept that fact. Also, at the same time, in 2018, 2019, we averaged about 10 sales a year in our development. This year, through July, we've had over that amount already. So that, obviously, real estate sales are good, but ours are being spurred by the potential for that street to open up with Caldwell traffic and the dangerous driving that we have out in front and the future planned development that's going to come in around the area. We love our neighborhood, we just want a safe neighborhood. We're not designed to handle six, seven streets of traffic to come through our neighborhood to reach Cherry Lane. So we need to be safer on Cherry Lane, and we need to be safer with the volume of traffic coming in. We've had many years of just having a emergency exit on the north end, we should just continue it. We'll do whatever you want to do to maintain that emergency exit, but we don't want that street opened up, have all that traffic coming down through our subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that.
You bet.
Keith?
Thanks. He's pretty much said everything. Again, before I, before I start, thank you for keeping prayer in here, in the council. Thank you for keeping God and Jesus in council too. So I commend you for that, so thank you. Everything he said is true. Through Councilman Rodriguez's advice, I've met with the people, you've read the letter that I mentioned. The common conclusion is that was never meant to be a throughway. It was meant to be an exit from our development. Again, it's been blocked for the last 10 years. We'd like to keep it that way. It's our understanding there's $100,000 out there still from the development to develop that area there. We don't care, you guys can keep the $100,000, we'll develop it, we'll put up the exit, we'll put up what you want us to put up. We just like to keep that entrance blocked. We've talked to the, we've talked to the fire department. They're in favor, they're not going to oppose it, put it that way, they just want an emergency exit, which we have. So we just want to keep that. We'll put up pillars and a chain or whatever you guys want us to do. And that's why we're coming to you to ask, what would you like us to do if we can do that? So that's it, really.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mayor Kling, I do have a couple of questions. Keith, when you talk about $100,000, that was given to the city by the developer, Cameron Marshall?
Yes.
And he said to use that for whatever purpose?
Well, it was for development of that back piece right there.
Okay.
Whatever that was, sidewalks or whatever that was, so.
Okay, and, and what you're requesting to do right now is to make that entrance exit emergency for fire or police or whatever.
whatsoever. And just to kind of give you what's going on in, in the back of Caldwell, there's quite a bit of development, a lot of development. We've already had circumstances that cars have gone through our crash gate to get through our neighborhood. We've had motorcycles go through our walkway because they don't want to go around. We've had to do different things to keep that from happening again. So really, we're just asking to keep that blocked. And again, it's only going to get worse in Caldwell, there's already niches of apartments on the other side. When I understand, the last time I talked to people on the list, that there's maybe more apartments to the south of us. So it's like, okay, that's just more traffic for us. If you go from Eustick, you can go from Eustick, which is farther up by the schools, you can go down Eustick, you can go through Caldwell, you can enter into Lassiter, you can enter into Steel Falls, you can go across Cherry, and you go directly through the apartments and get right to the marketplace without hitting the main street. So that's a lot. So anyway, I leave it up for discussion and, you know, questions and answers. I mean, we're just trying to, like I say, keep our community safe and not a lot of traffic. So you tell us.
Well, thank you. I have a quick question. Who has the jurisdiction on Cherry Lane? Is that Highway District or is that us?
Both.
It's, so to change the...
There's portions that are ours and portions that are theirs. And I, I'm prepared to speak to the, the speed limit changes.
Okay.
As they, the other requests.
Okay, perfect. Because I'm curious, to me, it's a no-brainer, but...
What I'm trying to achieve tonight is some kind of promise from you or document from you from the council, the city, to say that we will keep that closed for the next five to 10 years to give our, our residents there a peace of mind. Because I'm fearful that we're going to have a mass exodus if you open that up. In fact, two people have just put their house up for sale because of it, because they are worried about that coming through. We don't want to see that. We want to see our, obviously, everybody wants to see their property value stay the same. And we just feel if that opens up, that's going to change our property value too. So, again, there are fears and there are just fears of all of this.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
No, Dan.
Okay, at this time. Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it, thank you. Okay, Daniel?
Mayor, Councilman, Cherry Lane is split jurisdiction. The eastern portion of Cherry Lane there is within the city's jurisdiction, the western portion is still within the Napa Highway District's jurisdiction.
Eastern, western, based on what dividing line?
Between Midland and Middleton. So eastern, more towards Midland, is within the city's jurisdiction. As you go farther west past Steel Falls and the marketplace where the apartments were put, that becomes Ken, or Napa Highway District's jurisdiction.
Okay.
We have tasked our street department to put the counters and speed data collectors out on that segment of road so that we can do a speed study and work with the Highway District to bring a proposal back to council on whether it is appropriate to change that speed limit or not, based on actual speed data that we will collect. Currently, that street is part of the detour for the roundabout project that the Highway District and Caldwell have going at Midland and Eustick. And so the data collection will need to wait until that detour, that intersection is complete, and we are not seeing detour traffic on that road, which would skew the, the data that we were saying. So, so we have it in our plans to do that speed study. Once we have that data collection, then we'll work with the Highway District to have a proposal for what the appropriate speed limit should be there, bring that back to council for your action.
When will that be done, the roundabout?
Have you, have you heard on Midland, Eustick, when they're talking that one being completed? It's this summer time, sometime, I don't know. Yeah, so I, I think it's, I think we're within a month or two of that being completed and then be able to collect that.
I know you need data, but candidly, it ought to be 35. And so it's hard. I mean, in my opinion, when you look at that and you look at how busy that road is and in that area, it should be 35. And so you hate to have to wait for the data, but if we have to do it appropriately, then hopefully they get done pretty soon.
We have that reputation.
Do we have to do it appropriately? I don't know. I tell you what, the council can...
I don't think I've ever been accused of that.
This can be an action item, and the council could just say, hey, send a letter to Highway District 1 because we all request that it gets moved to 35 with no data.
Mayor, I have to tell myself, I work at St. Luke's, and you go through that congestion that's so frustrating, people hit that 50 mile per hour and they're gone. And honestly, it doesn't feel safe, even being one who, you hit that 50 mile per hour and it's not very long, it's not a very long stretch till you hit that corner. And it, to me, it actually feels unsafe as a driver. It doesn't feel contiguous with the apartments and all the relative congestion trying to get through there. I think people hit frustration point and they're gone. And it, I think 35 is absolutely appropriate. Sorry, Daniel, I know studies need to be done, but as a driver who works out there, it feels too fast.
So Mayor, just protocol question then, is this for future public relations with Napa Highway Department, or would there, I mean, do you feel like there'd be a challenge if we went ahead and took action on this of the speed limit?
I, I don't know whether they would be willing to make a change without the appropriate speed study being done.
So, but you don't think it'd be a challenge as far as our PR with this, if we went, they can make the decision whether they want the study or not if we go ahead and make the suggestion that, that it be changed, right, or not? You're, you're hesitating, so...
We have no authority to dictate what they do. If you would like us to request that of them, we can.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, I'd be favorable and request. Are we on the other ones too? Can we ask Daniel or whoever on the, on the emergency, or are we on...
Absolutely. So just on this one point, I'm, I'm getting a nod. Are we in agreement as a council that we would like to, as a council, request that Highway District 1 consider moving the speed limit to 35? I mean, it should just be a request, asking them if they would consider moving it down, that we feel like it's a safety issue, and it might help prompt them to move quicker on it. Is that, are we good with that?
So are we making, Mayor, are we making an action on both these together, or...
No, I would just do them separate. So on this one...
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, is that the city council actually requests the Highway District consider changing the speed limit to 35? Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, roll call. Well, it's all in favor.
Hi.
Okay. Opposed? Okay, so there you go. You got it.
I'm opposed.
Oh, you're opposed? Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. I didn't give discussion opportunity. Are you okay?
I'm not that passionate about it.
Okay. Okay, let's move to the next item, which is the emergency exit only. Daniel, thank you.
Mayor, Council, so a little bit of history on the Steel Falls subdivision. Steel Falls was originally platted in the county prior to it being annexed into the city limits. The first phase was constructed in the county, that, with city utilities. Once the property north of the Treasure Valley Crossing development was annexed in, they were contiguous. We exercised our annexation agreement with them. Council moved to accept the plaque that was existing there, and the final two phases were constructed within the city limits. The roadway to the north, let me pull up my pictures here. So Steel Falls, the Lassiter Lane, it's bounded by Lassiter Lane on the north. At the time Phase 3 was constructed, the developer, Kim Marshall, at that time, Whitney Springs here in Caldwell was not developed. This development here on the other side of the Solomon Drain was installed, but there was a very minimal crossing at the drain there. And so because only the north side of the road was developed here and no other portions were developed here, he came to council and requested to put up money for the future construction of their portion of Lassiter Lane, rather than construct that at that time, because it was somewhat discontinuous with other roads. And so the plaque for this development originally contemplated the improvement of Lassiter Lane and the connection of that development as a public street to Lassiter Lane to provide a second access to the 92 homes there. The fire code requires a minimum of two accesses for any developed, single-family development over 29 units. Currently, what was there, yeah, 92. We'll go back over to here. Currently, there is a vinyl fence that provides no access for either you, emergency or other. As I went out and looked at this this morning, I was unaware of that particular improvement there. It was not approved by the city in any fashion, nor would it be appropriate for a emergency access to have a permanent fence across it. So as we, as I look at that and as we met with the homeowners, people before, we discussed the city's adopted policies for looking at traffic calming in areas where there are concerns about bypass traffic coming through. The policy that we have in place was adopted in 2017, is a data-driven policy where we document what the issues are, we, we evaluate their severity and whether there is truly a need for traffic calming in those areas. And then in conjunction with the homeowners, we, we establish a funding plan for it and construct the appropriate traffic calming measures. Looking at the request, as we talked with the, with Mr., remind me how you say it.
I'm, yes, you.
We discussed that based on the current setup where there is not a connection point and there is not that traffic running there, there is no data to support the need for the traffic calm. We have consistently, as we've talked with them regarding those improvements to Lassiter Lane, committed that we do not intend to complete the frontage improvements on Steel Falls until such time as Lassiter does go all the way out to Midland to provide that easy access for these property owners to come over, hit the main road, and avoid going through that residential development. If, once that is all completed and that is in there, and the connection is made, at that point, if there truly does become an issue, we would work with the property owners within the existing policies to identify the appropriate traffic calming measures to discourage vehicles from using that there. We don't, as staff, feel that it is appropriate to designate that as a emergency access only on that public right of way. I don't know if I stand for any questions.
My question is why? Because it's not, we don't need it for access. So is there a reason why we can't leave that with an emergency fire access point? Because there's, there's no obligation as a city that we allow the Caldwell homes that's not even in our city to go through that subdivision. So I'm not understanding why we can't just make it an emergency access for our emergency vehicles and leave it closed, since it's currently closed.
So the current city policies, when we look at the connectivity of roadways, the, the current adopted engineering process and policy manual calls for stub roads to be connected into those roads that they're planning. It allows for not only connectivity for, it allows for the connectivity of those residents, so they no longer would have to, of Steel Falls, if heading north, they would not need to come down, go out on Cherry and hit that signal, reducing, they would be able to go to Lassiter, go to Middleton, go to Midland either way, avoiding the signals that are there at Midland and Cherry. So from a connectivity standpoint, it is the best management practice to not have that as a emergency access.
Mayor, I mean, I know, Daniel, I understand, Steel Falls, at least the HOA is saying that they don't care if they have to go out of their way a little bit, not allow traffic in. So if that's the case, I'm not understanding that. I mean, let's, let's, let's listen to, to our citizens and, I mean, otherwise, you're, you're opening that up. If they don't care if they can exit that way, then all, all, all that's going to happen is more traffic, as was said, is going to come in that way.
I, I have heard from not only those present here, I have heard from others who do not necessarily agree with the request that is...
Maybe we just get a petition and see, see how the homeowners...
Mayor Kling?
Yes.
Daniel, since it's a public road and we have public road standards, is there a requirement, since it exceeds 29 lots, that two exits or two entrances have to be provided?
The international fire code would, does require two entrance and exits for a development at this size.
So a fire, a fire-only access does not meet that standard?
The fire department has interpreted that it would.
Okay, so 90 lots, 92, is that what you said this has in it? Is there a best practice? Is that what you're telling us best practice is, why you're stating that it should be open to public access along with emergency access?
The best practice from a connectivity standpoint, and our policies would call for that road.
Do we have any liability that we assume as a city by limiting access for just general traffic to the south?
Not that I'm aware of.
No? Okay. So that, otherwise, I'd say allow it to be a private road, and then they could maintain it themselves. But if we're going to be maintaining it as a city, if there's standards that we have to follow, then that would be the fallback that we would have to look at from our standpoint of liability. So if there's no liability, then I don't see why, if the, if the majority, they could go ahead and put together a petition, I guess, and bring that back before us, before, I'm not going to make a decision tonight on that unless I know what's truly the, the will of the, the people that live out there.
Mayor and Councilman Haverfield, the initial request we received was, what would it take to make our roads private and navigated to?
Okay.
We explained to them that in order to do that, they would have to have 100% concurrence from all property owners within there in order to vacate those roads, as well as they would have to...
Take over maintenance.
Take over all maintenance and operations of those roads.
Right, okay. Mayor Kling?
Yes.
Okay, a couple of issues. Number one, the, the majority of the HOA members would have been here had it not been for the COVID situation. Is that right, Keith?
100%.
Yes, they've already discussed this several times. The thing that I'm concerned with is this, you talk about connectivity, but you're connecting to Caldwell, you're not connecting to Napa. Sorry, that's different.
I view that differently, it's, it's a public roadway network.
I understand that. Our taxpayers are the ones who may, who are going to have to maintain whatever streets in our community that are torn up because of those roads are not, are not built for heavy traffic. So the Caldwell people don't and won't because they're not legal for, they don't have to. But what that I'm concerned with, more than anything else of this whole situation right now, is that we have left Steel Falls without an emergency exit and entrance for, what, 10 years? And it looks like if it's another five years, if there's going to be any building going on out there, south or north of them, besides Caldwell, that we're, we, of which have already been, said that the fire department doesn't, they, they're okay with this, why aren't we allowing them to have an emergency exit? I think that's what the big part for me is, is that we should allow them to build a fire, an entrance and exit out there.
Mayor, Councilman Rodriguez, we didn't put the gate, the fence up there that prevents that emergency access currently. That was done, I don't know whether that was the developer or the homeowners association after the fact.
Yeah, yes, I, I know that. But, but what I'm saying for the last 10 years has been that way. Now, now they're requesting to have an entry-exit, emergency entry-exit. Why not? It's for the protection of our, of our, of our taxpayers and their residences. You see what I mean?
Councilman Rodriguez, so they, they are requesting that we permanently make this a emergency access. If they, we would not, I guess I wouldn't have any issues if they were saying, we'd like to take down this fence and put up a couple of bollards and a chain until the road goes in.
Okay.
Have that as an emergency access. That would, that would be no issue for us to do that.
Okay, and then, and if it, if it's 10 years from now, it'll stay. If it's five years from now, it'll, it'll come up again down the road, that's what you're saying? Or we could just do it now?
Mayor, I'm going to make a motion, it's 10:15, I'm getting cranky. So I'll make a motion that we delay this until our next, next meeting, and I'm asking our, the HOA of Steel Falls to have a petition with all, at least somebody go door, I know it's a job to go door-to-door and to get a petition and sign by all the residents, and then we make a decision on this. So that's my motion.
I have a question for you.
Motion, a second, the motion.
So you've got a second?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion, typically no but yes. What's your question?
What is, what is, I understand the petition, but if I get it signed by 92 of our members, what are you, what is it going to give us, what we're asking? Tell us your petition.
Well, I can only speak for myself. I would probably give you what you want right now, but we're wanting, Councilman Haverfield, I like this point where he wants to make sure there's a consensus.
Okay.
And so, yeah, even if, you know, maybe the staff feels like it needs to be 100%, but if you have, if you have 90%, I'm probably personally going to be in there.
So help the council make a decision. It'll help the council make a decision.
I, I don't like to delay decisions, but since the folks are not here.
We have it done by tomorrow.
Well, it's two, two weeks.
August 17th is our next meeting, you'd need to have it by the Wednesday in advance, that would be helpful. So there's been a motion and a second, and that is to delay this, move this to the August 17th council meeting as an unfinished business item, and to bring a, a petition from the HOA members. So it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Welcome, thank you. Now you can go home. Okay, let's move back to item 55, this is Beth, this is the discussion for the potential land exchange of the downtown parking lots with NAPA Development Corporation. Man, we have got a lot yet on this agenda. Do you, if this is, do you think this is gonna be a long discussion or an easy one?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, hopefully it is easy, okay?
Mayor, Council, in your packets was a brief write-up about the proposal, NDC owns the property at 10th and 2nd, which is almost of equal size to the city-owned property at 12th and 3rd. We've had discussions in the past about the development potential of the 12th and 3rd lot. It's certainly an easier process for NDC to go through the development process, and they have more controls over what can go there if they manage it versus just selling it at auction, which is kind of what the city's process would be. And the city, I believe, has some interest in the parking lot at 10th and 2nd, it's adjacent to fire station number one, for potential expansion of fire station number one, for administrative offices, or, or what might come down the road eventually with that fire station, and having city ownership of the entire block seemed to be an appealing option. So at this point, we're just asking, NDC has discussed it, they are willing to kind of enter into negotiations with the city in this swap exchange. We've evaluated the properties to essentially have equivalent value, so we are happy to move forward with putting together contract language for council to consider if this is an exchange that you would like to move forward with.
Mayor? Yes. Thank you. Beth, refresh my memory, I'm, I was thinking that the parking lot on 10th and 2nd ended up going with the old library, or they're leasing that to park on it, so does that affect their ability to park on there?
Mayor, Council, it is currently leased to both Hopper Electric and to Mike Mussel for the tenants of the old library by NDC, NDC still has ownership of it. Would imagine that until the event that the city wants to, to do something more with it, the city could carry out those leases, it's at the same price rate as the, the city lease rates in downtown.
So there was not any, there was not a stipulation with the old library that that parking lot stays with it?
No.
Okay, thank you. And just to follow up on that, there's also leased parking on the other property that is setting at 12th and 3rd. So, and that, it would be the same situation there, right? I would anticipate.
Right, so at whatever point it was to be developed, the 12th and 3rd, those leases would probably go away, but it is across the street from the parking garage, so, which is a whole nother discussion.
And one more question, if I might, Mayor? So there's not a contract in place that we'd be breaking or anything of that sort? And no matter, we would contact those people that lease, and we'd give them adequate notice?
Yes, Mayor, Council, I believe so.
Mayor Kling, I'll just follow up with Beth's comments, from an NDC perspective, the desire has been to eliminate some of the additional surplus properties that NDC has control over. It made more sense from the beginning to make this land swap when, when we were looking at Home Federal selling us the Development Services Building, and then they were looking at that corner on 3rd and 16th as a potential site for a, a smaller bank. So I mean, that's why the conversation began, is maybe that would be a, a way to look at being able to develop that property. City couldn't develop, but they could only sell it. NDC is a development agency, so we could look at setting up a, a good means of being able to achieve that end. And in this exchange, it allows the city to retain property adjacent to fire station number one, whether or not long-term it, it stays a parking lot or becomes something other than that, it's a better location. We've already allowed the, the library staff to start parking in the parking structure, so it frees up the parking that originally was for them on 3rd and 6th, or 3rd and 12th. So, this just makes a lot of sense to be able to allow then the NDC to put that property out for development purposes, bring back a, a return on, on an investment finally, and get a taxable entity on that corner instead of a parking lot. So it just made a lot of sense from NDC perspective, and long-term, I think it's a win-win with the city as well.
And I, just a follow-up, I totally agree with you there, and I fully, I shared with the NDC that I support this recommendation, I think it's very wise. This is the parking lot right next to our fire station one, and it gives the city the opportunity to work with the fire district, with fire or whatever with that lot, but I think it's much better for that to be the city-owned lot versus NDC, so I, I fully support this. Mayor? Yes.
I have another question. On the 10th and 2nd lot, it says the lot, lot size is .47 acres, tax assessed value is $200,880, proposed NDC listing price $350,000. So is that because if they build on it, they're projecting that that increases the value?
Mayor, Council, as with anything, the, the county has one assessed value, and then the market has a different value, and, and D.C. felt that $350,000 was kind of the minimum that they would want to see the property sold for at this point. And so if they were to, there are two options that the board's considering essentially, is to do this exchange, or to put it out there to the development community and sell it outright for that, and they would, you know, put 350 as essentially the selling price.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I'm pointing to him to make a motion.
I would stand for a motion, yep.
Mayor Kling, I'll make the motion to allow the NAPA Development Corporation to move forward with the documentation to bring before city council for a land exchange as proposed in our packet.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you, so we'll move on. Thank you, Beth, appreciate it. 57 on the agenda, this is to request the council to authorize Environmental Compliance Engineering Streets and Parks Department to proceed with the construction of the Educational Rain Garden Project. This was approved in the FY '20 budget, and has been discussed for a number of years.
So move, so, go ahead, someone second, and I have a question.
Second, it's been moved and seconded.
So who, who is maintaining this time, year after year? I mean, I see the initial cost, but who, who's actually taking care of all this?
Parks.
Parks Department. So it's not volunteers, or? So, so any estimate of cost of what this is gonna cost to maintain this, it's beautiful, I mean, there's no question about that, but who, the cost to the city as far as maintaining this? I've seen rose gardens go to pot, so that's why I'm asking.
We did, yeah. Parks isn't here, I'm not, I'm not sure.
It's more native and.
So it doesn't need much maintenance?
I don't believe, no, it's not like a rose garden that you're gonna have significant maintenance for the vegetation and that.
Okay, and I guess, cities, I hear me, I would, I would love, I mean, if this is gonna be for education purposes, I, I would love for, you know, for schools, for students, and, and to get out there, and they can divide their time, and whatever the case is, maybe they take, take one weekend every three months or something, and, and, you know, help with that. I'm, I'm not into the city paying for maintenance of this, when it's an education-type thing. It's beautiful, I don't question that, so. Anyway, that's, I guess I am not ready to vote on this, I probably won't vote yes unless I know what the cost is gonna be as far as year after year, so.
Motion's been made and seconded, so let's call for the vote then.
Is there any further discussion? Seen none, roll call.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Brunner?
No.
Levi?
No.
Bauer?
No.
Mucci?
Yes.
Mayor gets to break the tie. Yeah, yes.
And I'm gonna vote yes. This is, and I totally respect that, I've got, there is a NAPA gardening club that actually does all the gardening right here for our veterans' garden here at City Hall that used to be us, and so I think we'll find somebody.
There's gotta be people that love to do this type of thing, so please, okay, then I, then I'll be happy.
We'll work on it. So I believe that, what's that?
Name Brunner.
No, I think, I think anybody that voted, voted yes should be putting a weekend, at least, you know, every, every other.
I'll be there with you.
Will do.
Okay. Item 58 on the agenda is the first reading of a street naming ordinance for South Drifter Loop.
An ordinance of the city of Napa Canyon County, Idaho, naming a public street, South Drifter Loop.
So move, second.
Roll call.
Brunner?
Yes.
Mucci?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
59 is the first reading of street naming ordinance for South Kelsey Lane.
An ordinance of the city of Napa Canyon County, Idaho, naming a private lane, South Kelsey Lane.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mucci?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes. Mayor, just a quick question, how can we, how can we did just, didn't do a roll call on the, on, on this, on the land swap, was that just a?
It's, I would say, I have, I have a cheat sheet, and they say it's an all-in-favor versus a roll call, and by the city clerk.
Just to rep, so they could start putting something together?
Because you're gonna have to approve the contract later with, and that will be a roll call.
That makes sense, thanks.
Mayor, on those last two ordinances, were, you may not have got the request for passing those under suspension of rules.
It was not on here. Did we need to on that?
If we don't wanna read them again twice again.
Okay, so.
Let's redo them.
Let's go back and redo them then, so item 58, thank you, typically it's on here to pass under suspension of rules.
You may not have gotten it to the clerk for that reference.
Okay, that's.
I made the motion under, and I'll add suspend, under suspension of rules, I don't know.
Okay, was that for 58?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's repeat the vote on that, because it is under suspension of rules. Roll call.
For 58?
For 58.
Yes.
Mucci?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
So for 59, I don't remember who made the motion and seconded, could we just change that to pass under suspension of rules?
My second, yeah.
I, I made the motion, yes, amended to that fact.
Okay, roll call.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mucci?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Daniel, thank you very much, I appreciate that catch, thank you.
Save this time.
Yes. Okay, 510 is an action item, this is to request the council authorize the mayor to sign a change order number one in the amount of $58,718.75 for the Colorado Avenue and Holly Street Signal Project.
So move.
Again, question?
Yes.
Daniel, you're the one that I addressed this to, or Tom?
You're the one.
Well, it's odd for me to hear that a change order was approved in the budget. Was it the actual amount that was approved, and this falls within that amount?
Correct, there, they, it's within the project budget that the bids came in lower, so there.
So there was a surplus there to work with? Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seen none, roll call.
Mucci?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Item 511 is an action item, this is to request the council authorize the mayor to sign the local professional services agreement with ITD and TO engineers for the stoddard pathway extension, phase one and two, and this is approved in the FY '20 budget.
So move.
Second, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Mucci?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
It's late and we're moving quickly, but I'm thrilled to see the stoddard pathway extension taking place, that's very good news. Item 512 is an action item, this is to authorize the mayor to sign the resolution for cooperative agreement between the ITD and the city of Napa for project number A013471 Garrity, this is the I-84B Idaho Center Boulevard Signal Timing Project, and it's been approved.
Second.
Mayor question?
Yes.
Again, just for clarity, NAPA's portion of this is $11,203, is that correct? I saw other numbers floating in there, but is, at the end it said $11,203, is that?
Yeah, Mayor.
And that's out of impact.
Yeah, that's correct, this, we, this, this, this item is, is, is a science stake, a state-local agreement to get 15,000 from ITD, our portion's 11,000.
Right.
The city's portion.
Right. I just wanted to make sure I was reading it properly. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion or questions? Seen none, roll call.
Mucci?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
We're going to move, we're gonna skip item 513, we're gonna come back to that, we're gonna do 514 first. And it's an action item, this is to authorize the mayor and public works director to sign an amended professional services agreement and task order with Brown and Caldwell for the Napa wastewater program, phase two upgrades, project group F, progressive design-build owner's advisor for phase one services.
I've been a part of this, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion, but there may be some other council members that need more information, but I, I move that we do so.
That we approve it?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there a discussion?
Mayor Kling?
Yes.
Depends on how feisty I wanna get tonight, I see Matt sitting there. It's important that we understand what we're, we're passing, and something that I've struggled with on prior projects is the potential for duplication of services, and that's why it was important that I talked to Tom and to Nate about this, so that we don't end up spending, spending dollars twice. So, I know that Tom and Matt have gone back, or I'm sorry, Nate have gone back and talked to Matt about a reduction in their, in their services. My question, and I'll just be blunt, so you can answer it for the, the council, what happens if we don't approve this? Because it, we are hiring a design, in the next motion, we're gonna be hiring a design-build contractor to provide a design and the construction for, for this upcoming scope of work. So having an, an advisor to the city, you've, you've explained to me, and, and I'll let you explain it to the council, why that's important, or can it be looked at differently?
Mayor, Council, Haverfield, so, I don't know if we use the right term advisor, maybe that was not, not the best one, but we're, it's basically hiring staff to help us administer the contract, so it's not, instead of hiring in-house staff, we're hiring a consultant, Brown and Caldwell, to help us with the, so if you, if you wanna compare some of our counterparts, we've done a lot of that tonight, you know, Boise and Meridian, they have teams on staff that are engineers and technical people to, to actually administer contracts, go through, review the plans, and in this case, we have an added element of the SRF loan and all the documentation that goes along with that. So, you know, this, we would have to hire six people in-house to cover what we're proposing with Brown and Caldwell, and we've had difficulty hiring engineers to do this type of work, it's very specialty, so, so instead of hiring people, now Nate, we got Nate, he's, he's an engineer, and he's got Shannon, he's an engineer, and then we have an EIT, and then, so if you look at, you know, something of this size, like the Boise would have do this and Meridian, they had, they'd have six engineers on it, and, and a team of people, and that's, so that's, that, that's, if we don't have these, we don't have this contract, it puts that, that's, if we don't have these, we don't have this contract, it puts us at risk because, um, you know, we want this to be a successful project. And when, and when, you know, if some, something goes wrong, then it's, it's, it's the city. And when we're in construction on this large of a project that can compound quickly and, and we'd be in trouble. So it's, it's a, it's a bit of an insurance and a risk mitigation, and that's going to help us mitigate staff for not being able to hire staff.
Mayor, if you allow me to, then Tom, you've answered my other question because it, it didn't have a breakdown of how many people we were talking about. This six hundred thousand a year is going to go towards. Uh, and we're talking about phase one design services only oversight, whether it's advisory or if it's an oversight role that Brown and Caldwell is going to be providing. Uh, from the very beginning, my thought was, why isn't Brown and Caldwell part of the design build team, uh, doing the design for the project? Uh, and I got that answer early on in the process, but, um, they're the ones with the expertise. I appreciate Matt's, uh, behavior. I mean, everything that he's been able to present to us has been concise and well delivered. But then again, my concern is what happens if something happens to him, if he's walking across the street? Who's behind him? What's the bench behind him, uh, moving forward? So, uh, it's important that we're, we're looking at their whole team.
Right.
As we're going forward. And I definitely had issues with, um, the phase two construction side of it. Uh, I'm going to, you're going to really have to work hard to convince me of the amount of money that we're allocating to that for Brown and Caldwell in a, an advisory role for construction administration, but that's above and beyond this conversation tonight. So I know it's come down quite a bit from my original conversations with you. At least that's what I understand. So, uh, we've tried to save the city money, uh, in the initial aspects of this. So I already told Tom that I would support this new number, but I wanted him to squirm a little bit tonight.
And Mayor, I appreciate Councilman Haverfield and, uh, yeah, there are some concerns with the phase two. And then you, I think anyone that's been around me knows I'm not a consultant lover. But if there's, if there's anyone I would at least give a thumbs up to, most of the time it's Brown and Caldwell. I just have, I've been around them and appreciate their work and Dave and Matt team, so.
Oh, Mayor.
We, we, as long as you keep an eye and let, and, uh, we'll keep an eye on them.
Just keep me from getting hit by a bus. The one thing you did share with me too, that I wanted to have, you didn't share it with council is Brown and Caldwell's performance over the last few projects have actually come in under. So we're hoping that that would help, uh, this as well, as we're, we're squirming for dollars. Uh, the fewer dollars we have to borrow, the better.
Yeah, Council, that's very true. Um, maximum not exceed, based on estimated labor hours, we review invoices and they do have a track record of coming in below, um, below that number. Um, yeah, by, by a pretty good percentage. I think it was, uh, four hundred thousand on the last one on phase one. They were under.
Actually, what I'm thinking is they may actually save us the entire fee we're paying them in the construction with your oversight. That would be the goal, is that we get the construction down by what we're paying you because we've had the good oversight and we've made good decisions. So we keep that, because the overall project is massive. And so that would be the goal, that we can keep that, that side.
Can you make that promise? Take your mask off, make the promise.
I, I, Mayor, I, I thought Councilman Haverfield was going to make sure he promised he didn't get hit on the street.
That's part of it. You're going to sit there for the rest of your life. So the motion's been made and seconded. I guess we can vote now.
I think we can. Roll call. Debbie, are you there?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Mucci?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Now, we're going to move back to five thirteen, and aren't you glad that one's done? So, uh, five thirteen is to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement upon receipt of Idaho Department of Environmental Quality Award Acceptance Letter. It would be for the Napa wastewater phase two upgrades, project group F, progressive design build agreement with CH Two Hill engineers. It's been reviewed and approved by legal and it is in the budget.
Again, I will move on that one.
I'll second the motion. And again, I appreciate all the work that's been done by the city staff and, and the team that have been involved with it, Matt's involvement. Um, I think we've got a good team put together and now we just need to help them do their job well.
Yeah, appreciate your support on the, on the team.
So, and just if I may, just ask a question to legal, Mark. So you felt good about all the, everything that's been negotiated and, uh, I mean, you're, from in the packet, that's what I, that's what I perceive, so.
Yeah, um, we've got three hundred pages in there. I can go over it at whatever level of detail.
No, no, I know. I, I saw the three hundred pages.
The.
So, uh, so anyway, I just, but the overall summary was, I mean, there, because there were some, there were some concerns going in, you know, whether, no negotiation, but it sounds like it was even more better than what even some projections were, so.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, just take a few seconds. I, I will be quick. Um, although in fairness, I was prepared to go over all of it with you tonight if you have any questions and that, that offer stands. Um, it, this has been, yeah, the long process and a lot of work has gone into this, and this is the right agreement. Uh, you have the right team. I have been honored to be a part of it. This has been interesting for me. It's been challenging for me professionally. Um, I have enjoyed working. It, it's a big night for those of us that have been, um, you know, heavily involved in this. I've become the wastewater guy in my office and everybody laughs at that, but I like it. And so anyway, I, all that to say, yes, there is not a portion of any of that three hundred pages that has not been very carefully reviewed by the team. And I can say with complete confidence that, uh, we have a good agreement, um, that mitigates the risk for the city as much as can be. And we've got representatives from CH Two Hill. They might say a little more than is reasonable, and that's probably a good place for us to be in. So, and again, I certainly would stand for any questions on any of this stuff.
Some nods from the two masked men that are going to do all this work for us.
There's Lee, by the way.
I think after we vote, I'd like to meet the, the gentleman in the back, but I do want to quickly say and, and follow up to Mark's comments. There's been a team of people, and they're not here tonight. The people that have been here, Larry, Carol, and who am I forgetting? Randy, Darrell. Oh, there you go. Okay. So this is the team, that evaluation committee, and, uh, Tom, you guys have done an amazing job guiding this entire process because this has been a heavy lift that has taken months and months and months. Um, so it's late tonight and there aren't, aren't many people here, but it, you guys have done a phenomenal job. Really appreciate your work, your dedication. It's been excellent, uh, to Brown and Caldwell for your assistance with it and to the team of people whose names are up there. Because I tell you what, for, for the group, they have just, my goodness, you guys had so many seven AM meetings and spent hours.
That's my fault, but yeah, it was.
Yeah, it was your fault, wasn't it?
Matt loved me and he still does, yeah.
Yeah, clap after we vote. Clap after we vote.
Let me just, let me just say, just one more time though, with these three citizens, Larry Olmstead and Carol Kinfield and James Hall, I mean, uh, all of them, I think, uh, were just amazing. And just a little side note, uh, Larry Olmstead had COVID. He had, he had a fall the other day. He's through with COVID, but he's in a, he's in a recovery center for, he broke his foot. So, uh, anyway, he doesn't tell anybody that and he'll probably be mad at me for saying that. But anyway, just to appreciate people like that, that, uh, just commit their time and energy and, and to us and the city of Napa, so.
So Mayor, Council, this team brought a lot to the table, a lot of different perspectives and really helped us make a good decision. So I do appreciate them and everybody involved. It's been, been great to be involved in this.
And they're not done, by the way. They're not done.
Not this, just, we're just getting the start.
Just a pause.
But this is a big, you know, it's a milestone that's important. So we're glad to get to this point to make this selection.
And another good night tonight, even though that beard is questionable, but you too.
And you've got a suit on and you don't even get to stand up yet.
You know, you know, you know, I, I've, I've had some concern with masks, but maybe you need to wear one.
They don't work with the beard.
I'll get you more than one if you'd like, please.
Mayor Kling?
Yes.
Uh, just for clarification, uh, what are we, this motion is for, um, what dollar amount? Is this for the one hundred and forty-four million dollar project, or is this for the eleven million, two hundred and ninety-one, uh, for the design builder in the phase one? Are we talking about phase two as well? Upgrades?
No, this is, uh.
I just want to be clear on what we're actually voting on.
It should be at the bottom here. So this is, uh, request is council award, um, the mayor to sign agreement for the Napa wastewater phase two design build agreement with CH Two Hill in the amount of eleven million, two hundred and ninety-one thousand.
Okay, so we're, we're authorizing the design portion of the design build along with the oversight role by Brown and Caldwell, uh, of one point two. Okay, so that's, I wanted to be clear on that because this, uh, what's written here speaks to, uh, phase two upgrades for project group F, but, uh, we're just talking about the design or what's listed here in the request.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, uh, Council Haverfield, the, the request is the very last page and there's some background information to give the whole story, but we're just asking.
Right. And that's what your motion was, Darrell?
That, that was what I intended.
Okay, good. That was my second.
We'll be talking about this many times again.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, roll call.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mucci?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
And what are, would you guys like to say anything? As you've just been awarded.
Since you've been here for.
So you noticed the Jacob shirt and then it's awarded to CH Two Hill and just.
Yeah, all three of these.
I think you all know that. Come on up, yeah.
So we are second office manager in this whole state. Uh, he's been here just a little while and I'm, I'm our regional, well, the manager of business here, so.
And the guy behind.
Vice president of the company and then we've got, standing right there next to us, and we're just proud to be here.
Yeah, so, so Rick, Rick, do you have a camera? So we can get, maybe you get a quick shot of this.
Sure.
Okay. Get, get, get the mayor in it.
Well, get Nate, come on up here, Nate.
Get Nate in.
And actually, yeah.
Get the whole team.
Seriously, come, you guys come up here face that way and Nate, come, you need to be in the picture. Yeah, come on. Tom, you should be in there too. Yeah, Matt? Yeah, go for it, guys. This is all about you. So Randy and, you guys ought to get in there.
No, 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 this is, this is.
They'll never see me in that group.
Oh, scoot. No, no, this is, you guys do it.
All right.
I'm away.
Gentlemen. Smile. You can actually tell we're smiling. All right.
Social distancing.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Early bird.
Are you?
Alrighty, so we are ready for item five, uh, fifteen on the agenda. And this is a subdivision short plat approval for Franklin Office Warehouse at one six one four nine North Franklin Boulevard. This is for three industrial lots in an IP industrial, uh, planning, park zoning district for engineering solutions. Rodney, would you like to just really quickly give us the update as to why you brought this forward?
Yes, absolutely, Mayor. Um, Mayor and Council, the, the reason I'm bringing this before you today is because, uh, you gave me direction, staff direction, that, uh, you felt that the short plats didn't receive enough review. A preliminary plat will go through the process with planning and zoning, and then, uh, a final plat will come after the comments have been made by planning and zoning, uh, back to, to, uh, planning and zoning again. Um, and, and then it'll go on to your consent agenda usually for approval. Short plats go directly from planning and zoning. In the past, they've only gone then to your consent agenda. And so they have really only one real good review and that's at planning stage. So you directed me for short plats that they would come back to not only planning and zoning, but also to city council. Mayor, Council, this is, uh, a really good one to start on. There was like no concerns from anybody, um, for this, this project. Uh, they, the recommended, uh, changes are in your, your packet and in the staff report. I'm not going to go over them. I think we can summarize this really quickly. Uh, this is in an area that's, that's industrial in nature. You can see the IP zoning on the screen. Uh, there's industrial pretty much all around it. Except for across the street, the RS six, uh, zoning for a subdivision. And, um, and I will show you the, um, this is the, uh, the concept that they presented, or excuse me, the, uh, the site plan that they've presented. The landscaping, they meet the required setbacks. Uh, they are going to change a, a few minor things on, on these drawings. Uh, I forgot to mention that the applicant's representative is online. If you have any questions for them as well, they've been here a long time.
Oh, my.
Appreciate them being here. Again, just three buildable lots that are industrial and, uh, I, I have the correspondence in your packet and then the recommended, um, conditions from engineering and, um, and the changes, uh, that I recommended from our review from planning as well as comments from building department. So there is the potential motion for your consideration.
Mayor Kling, this isn't a public hearing, so I'll make the motion. I've, I've gone through the packet and it looks very appropriate to me that I make the motion to, uh, allow the, uh, short plat approval as presented to us by staff with recommended conditions of approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Mucci?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
I just have to say, Rodney, I apologize. I did not know who that was waiting. We should have pushed them forward. I sincerely, so whoever, to the woman or is?
Becky.
To Becky? If, I don't know if Becky's still on, but, oh my goodness. Yeah, I feel really bad that she was on that long waiting.
Rodney will take them to dinner or something.
Thank you, Rodney. Yell for.
On your dollar.
Yeah, giving the apology.
Not on the city dollar.
Yeah. Okay, so that was item number five fifteen. Hi, and you're still there. You've got a beautiful elk head back there. Thank you so much for waiting so long. Oh, my goodness. Yeah, thank you. You're, you're muted. Can you unmute?
Yep, I said, thank you very much. You're welcome.
And Rodney did offer a dinner, so.
All right, you guys have a nice evening. Thank you.
You, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Wow.
Okay, so item five sixteen was moved to August seventeenth, and so item five seventeen, this is an action item to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Nuri Link for the replacement of the audio system in the city council chambers. Doug, I understand this is funded through the COVID dollars because of the impact that our whole system has had. And so, um, it is funded through our COVID dollars, and that actually will need to come forward in a budget amendment at a later time.
Yes, that will be coming up shortly, yes.
In a budget amendment, but the funding is coming from that. Are there any questions or is there a motion?
Just a comment. I, I would not be voting for this if it was, I guess, not COVID dollars, and I'm still a little concerned with, uh, I mean, to me, I know there's need for improvement, but the sound is, I mean, fine as far as I'm concerned, and, uh, just even using federal dollars or, I don't know if these are COVID state dollars or federal dollars.
This is from the federal, passed through monies given to the state and passed through to us.
Okay, and here's, and, and are we having trouble using all the dollars or?
Well, I, I think the, uh, across the state, very few people, very few cities will use all the dollars given to them, but that's not the reason we're requesting this expenditure, just to use the money. That's not even, that's not the purpose.
So the essential high priority of the sound here is.
Well, it's more than just the sound. It's the sound tied out, not just in here, but among you and then out in the hall, tied into the audio visual, tied into the cabling for the new TVs. It's the whole package and, uh, enabling you to address more effectively the citizens and the residents in the COVID distancing. And then we have a request also in place, not tonight, but to replace these chairs with chairs that you can clean and then rearrange as needed. So it's, it's the, the intent is to make this more accessible to citizenry, more cleanable and, um, more communicable overall.
Okay, I don't know anything about the sound. I won't be voting in to replace the chairs. I know that in the future, but, uh, I'm not, not sure on the sound if this is a good price. I don't know if anyone else is an expert in that area or not, but.
Mayor Kling, I'm going to make the motion to allow the, allow you to sign the contract with Neuralink as presented to us this evening.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, if there is no second, then that means we do not move forward.
Mayor, I'm just concerned with the hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. I would think that we could use COVID money for something more priority, maybe.
Well, I wish Butch were here and he's not, um.
Can we, can we put this off for another, uh?
Probably, we have to have it done, but yes.
Yeah, we can. But Butch can, I don't know if Kirk can, he's on the screen, but Butch can explain it more in detail. Uh, there was a lot of, um, he has the, the technical understanding behind why it was that cost and what the benefit is it. But right now you've got, uh, individuals behind the scene constantly trying to manipulate the data so that we can do the online streaming, merge it with the teams or Zoom, and all the, the complexity of doing that is, is challenging in this environment. Was it, excuse me, Mayor, was this, was this out for bidding or is it just these guys doing it, or this company doing it? Uh, I, they put together a quote. I don't know if they put together a bid to receive the quote. the quote, but they had a bid from this company that they've worked with before to do this work. This was submitted to the state in its entirety with the bid and the quote to the state.
Thank you. So Kirk?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is Chief Carpenter. Just real quick, this, this is an effort that started a couple of months ago. It is fully using the, the COVID dollars that were assigned to each state to effectively put in place opportunity that would reduce the, the contact of not just community, but th- this would effectively make you more effective no matter what COVID brings to us in the future. It offers you the opportunity to have community involved in your, in your council meetings without them being present. It would be a vital and opportunity, opportunity time for us to take advantage of the funds that are being given to us to create an atmosphere in which you will be able to communicate with council and other members of the community without the, the disadvantages we see in the, in the, I guess, teams environment in which we now are living. Although the sound today is good, this just upgrades and creates an environment when, when community members can be more involved without having to be present in the room or if they are present, creates an environment in which it's safer no matter what COVID does in the future. So it, it is not impacting our budget in any means, but it is planning for the future no matter what COVID brings, I guess is the best explanation. So I would tell you that every time we make a decision on the monies that are given to us, it, it is solely our plan to make, make the best of opportunity for future planning. We, we could see depending on the numbers that there may be a time where we have another shutdown and with these changes you could still have your meetings and not have to worry about any technical difficulties that could come around. I guess that might be the best explanation I could give without Butch being here, but the, the, these weren't decisions that were made lightly. This was effectively to make it to where you could still have meetings even if you were at home and make it to where community could communicate with you no matter what the, the situation was for us.
Excuse me, you had a minute? Kurt, was there any companies in Napa that could do the same thing?
I, I don't know if I could answer that specifically. I do know that the city has had really good relationships with Neuralink and only in my own experience in distance learning for the fire department. They, they support us on a regular basis, sometimes at no cost, just to, to create an environment in which we could train within the, the fire department without delay in our response. Neuralink, I think, was just one of the many companies that gave a bid to the, the, the solution to what we were looking for for the council chambers.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm going to make the motion and we move this to the August seventeenth council meeting when Butch can be with us and give us some further details on, on the system and, and what it will provide for us not only now but in the future.
Is there a second? To move it to the next agenda, to the August seventeenth?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to move this to August seventeenth to where Butch can provide us with the background as to the number of bids he's received and better information.
Mayor, I am fully in support of a new system. When I've been at home, the sound in here is very choppy. It is very, very hard to hear and if, if you, yes, but if this isn't going away anytime soon, it's a real disservice to the public. There is one thing in here that I struggle with and it's the white glove support and it might just be semantics, but if we're using COVID dollars, do we need white glove support? And so I, for me, that elite and the white glove support, maybe those are just words they use in, in their, you know, their proposal, but I'd like to see is there a second tier that maybe doesn't feel so bougie that would, you know, we could maybe kind of get behind a little bit more. It just feels, it feels very top, top tier if we don't have to, have to have that piece just for our public.
Very good point. I appreciate the fact that we can at least move this forward and get the right information because it's absolutely the right thing to do for us as city employees to be working as diligently we, as we are, to have the funding here to support the work that needs to be done. It's imperative. To turn that away and not even consider it, I would be highly, highly disappointed of the council because we have worked so, I mean, we've worked our butts off with this COVID and I'm, I, we've worked so crazy hard to be fiscally accountable, to be good stewards. If we don't, if, if you always say don't spend any dollars, then tell us now because we're going to stop. We, Doug has worked night and day submitting requests to use funds for the upgrades that we need and so I guess we need to vote on this, but I want to, after we get done, I need the council to tell us if you don't want us bringing stuff forward, then we're going to stop right now and we are not going to waste our time because it is a waste of our time to be even attempting to do what we're doing right now. I don't want Doug spending another minute.
Mayor, would let you, I, I haven't seen what's on the docket, what we've, what we've applied for. So I mean, I would like to see what, what we've applied for and then I can make a better decision.
Doug, I think you spoke at the last council meeting. You've brought some of it forward, but we'll bring it forward.
Yeah.
I did. I don't want to, I don't want to belabor the point. It is late, but I will tell you out of, out of instructional points, there are two basic avenues we're going down to use the money. It is, the first one is for the, the PPE, the cleaning, the disinfectant, the processes to help keep us safe from catching the virus within the city with fire, with training and the fire and the police and so forth. That's one of the major categories. The second one that we, we appear to be getting hung up on is the infrastructure. If you, if you know me by now, you should know that I don't waste money. I don't bring things forward that are a frivolous spend and one of the most important things to me is our, my ability to communicate with you and facilitating your ability to communicate with the rest of the city and with your, your citizens and your residents. So what I've done, when people bring things to me, I look at that primarily and say, is this COVID nineteen related? Can, if I was on the end of the approving list, would I look at this and say, is this something I would want to approve or would I look at this and say, get it out of here? This is the weak stuff. So what I've been looking and doing is putting things into the buckets. If I would consider it, I put it in one of those two major buckets and infrastructure is something that allows us to maintain our integrity in a time of emergent disaster. And this is what I'm trying to do is prepare us so that if we, if we can exit this, we at least have prepared ourselves better for the next one because there will be a next one coming along. And communication is key in any disaster preparedness and the better we can communicate, the better we will be able to manage it and that's what I'm focusing on. So I will leave it at that.
And I'm not questioning, questioning the need. I'm, I just want to know more about the cost and, and so on on it. So, and so that, before I make a decision.
Excuse me for being intense.
It's okay. It's eleven oh five. You can be, you can be cranky too.
I will say we did not do a good job of presenting this and so it's our error to have it on the agenda when we couldn't present it. So I apologize.
Mayor, I a hundred percent support it. It was literally those words that in this financial environment made me think if I was somebody from the community reading that, how would I absorb that?
Yeah.
Mayor and Council, this is, this is Chief Carpenter and I, and I can't speak to the white glove. Unfortunately, I didn't read that portion, but what I can tell you is within the state, we're watching is the legislation. It also enacted a very similar request for cares act for their own internal communications and, and it was approved, but there is no reason, today our, our meeting worked and there is no reason why we shouldn't wait for clarity from our own IT and, and understanding of where the bid came from. I, I would just submit to the council and mayor that, that this was intended only for your ability to communicate with the citizens of, of Napa and, and yes, I would agree that you guys are, you are the ones responsible for these decisions. So there, there is no hard feelings other than we, actually, there's no hard feelings. We only want for you to be able to communicate with the community and not have the issues that we've had in the past or take the opportunity right now to consider that we, we do get the, the chance to create an atmosphere in which you, you will have a guaranteed opportunity to have good communications in the future.
We're unsure that we have the proper support, but you are going to see other requests come through and they're infrastructure and one is chairs and we have gone through and we've worked hard on it, but.
And if I, if somebody tells me a good reason to spend the federal money on chairs, I'll vote for it.
Environment of care. They're disease burdens. We, they are not allowed in any healthcare facility. I don't know, Jacob, you probably do not have fabric in your clinics. They're not allowed to have any fabric. They have to be wipeable. It's really gross.
So there's no inserts you can put in chairs?
No.
Okay.
And those could be donated to, I'm sure, like an old theater or something.
Well, and we've looked at recovering them and it's actually more costly.
Well, I know, I'm not talking about covering, I'm talking about just the temporary, you know, I have no nothing, but.
Mayor Cling?
Okay, so I'm gonna, we're gonna go back to.
Do we have a second? Did we have?
We have a motion, a second, and so this is just to postpone it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so let's move on to five eighteen. Action item, this is the first reading of ordinance for the repeal of Title Nine, Chapter Thirteen Airport Regulations from, from Napa City Code.
So moved.
I think we need to hear it and it is requested to pass under suspension of rules.
I thought this was just a duplication. I'm sorry.
An ordinance enacted by the Napa City Council, meaning Title Nine, Chapter Thirteen of the Napa City Code relocating airport minimum standards to a different document, providing for an effective date, providing for severability and repealing all ordinances, resolutions, orders and parts thereof in conflict here with.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded and that is to request to pass under suspension of rules?
So moved.
Okay, discussion? Roll call.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Mucci?
Yes.
Powerfield?
Yes.
That everybody?
Yep.
Good. So five nineteen, this is to approval of legal services administrative policy and I don't know if you guys had a chance to review this. Are there any questions? Rick, do you want to comment? This was a take from the other, the administrative policy.
I would normally not pass up an opportunity to speak, but silence is a gift right now. But I won't necessarily pass it.
They need approval on this, Mayor.
We would need approval.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or is there any discussion regarding this administrative policy? Yes.
I would just ask of Legal if he's had a chance to review this and how it affects his involvement with city.
So Rick, a question for you is did you have Legal review this or is this Legals that they already, that's what I was wanting you to explain. That's very important. Thank you.
So I, I did engage Mr. Waterman, Douglas Waterman, and due to the nature that we are going through an RFP, one of the questions that was asked was about this and so at that time, I don't know if he briefed you, he, he didn't want to engage in much discussion about this so as to give the appearance that our current firm was given an advantage or any appearances of insider sort of discussion about the policy. But it, it partly emanated from the fact that, you know, in state statute, our city attorney is, is a requirement and from stat, through the statute and we have a unique relationship when we choose to contract those legal services and we want to tighten the relationship with our legal services. And so while they're not an employee subject to this entire handbook, we, we wanted to bolster just best practices. So I'm not going to belabor the point. I think you've reviewed the document, but some of the highlights in here is an annual review that council and mayor will have of legal services. And while this specifically contemplates, contemplates the city attorney, which is currently healthy in your firm, the intent is also to extend that to review prosecute or prosecutor, which is also contracted. So while this is specific and crafted in a way that's contemplating city attorney, I think it's good practices to have an annual review of prosecution services as well as legal services and just put measures in place for a good relationship.
Mayor, so Rick, my question is, is this the appropriate time to implement this policy or is, does, is it necessary to be implemented as a part of the RFP process so that it's in there, that it's approved by us before it goes out?
So to be, yeah, to be candid, I think as, as we're going through RFP and choosing to remain with contracted legal services, that the policy strengthens the relationship we want to have. So if, if you're not going to as a city hire in-house legal, for example, which would be an employee subject to the handbook and we are going to continue in a route of contracting out, we want to have a closer relationship and tighter measures in, in place than the relationship we have.
So the RFPs have already gone out?
Correct.
Is that listed in there that they have to follow that?
References made to an administrative policy.
But it isn't defined?
It's, it will be included in the addendum this week.
Oh, okay. If it's ratified tonight?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Madam Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
If, if I could just say for the record, we, my office was made aware of this last week and, and we have not, I mean, I've read it, but we're not going to advise the city on this at all. And the reason is because there's, there's state law that would prohibit a participant in RFP from being involved in crafting its terms and conditions. And so we don't want to provide any input on this. We do intend to respond to the RFP and I just want to make it clear for the record that we, we have not been involved in, my office has not been involved in reviewing this or crafting it or advising the city in any regard with respect to its terms and would not do that during the pendency of the RFP.
Mayor, so a follow-up to you, Rick, then. Where did this language come from?
So in preparing the RFP, when the shift was made, there was lots of evaluation of lots of cities that have similar arrangements. So, because those are the only cities that would be doing an RFP that are doing contracted. Otherwise, they have in-house legal. So a lot of the cities that was looking at crafting the RFP that, that was putting out, of course, as Mr. Hilty advised, it would have been inappropriate for us to engage as much as it would seem like you would lean on, on legal through that process. So consulting with lots of administrative policies in other cities, there, there was references to some sort of policy that's short of the employee handbook, but that also guides practices and how you evaluate. So for example, we, in our, our RFP, our current RFP, there's a, a three-year contract with two one-year renewals and that's, actually, that's, well, that's the current contract that was entered into. There's nothing in there that speaks about evaluation, how it's, how evaluation occurs or whatnot, so that feedback is given. I think, I think whoever we contract with as a firm deserves to have annual feedback from mayor and council to evaluate.
Is this only civil services or is it prosecuting as well?
So this contemplates specifically civil services, the city attorney as state statute requires, but prosecution services, which we also contract to someone else, other, would, would fall at least under the annual review and we can discuss how the administrative policy would, would apply specifically to that. But where it speaks about general retainers services here, of course, the, the prosecutor, would it be evaluated in the same manner that the city attorney is evaluating?
So my initial question then, you, you received this language from other administrators like yourself involved in this type of?
Yeah, it, it was and I, if it's okay, I disclose, and, and also a citizen has assisted it helped Glenn Rimby. I don't know if you're familiar, familiar with Glenn Rimby, so he has some experience in that, but yeah, so consulting with lots of policies, cities that do contract legal services, and of course, there are some cities that do, we have, some cities that don't, but cities that do, there's a professional services agreement or the contract, which was, of course, governs legally the nature of the relationship payment. The, in, in this case, we're leaning heavy on the RFP for what the payment scale is like, what services are included in the retainer and outside and this would be an administrative policy on, on things like that as well as other details like guidelines for, just one example for the sake of time. By the way, this, this really brings polity behind good practice. So this isn't prompted by anything that's occurred with Mr. Hilty or anyone in his firm. I'd say the practice is good, but there should be polity that reinforces the, the, the practice. But for example, what does Legal do if like five of you in council are advising Legal to craft different opinions on everything from wastewater to other things of that nature and how much time they're spending answering those questions? If you referred to this, there's some, there's some policies and guidelines trying to govern what the nature of the relationship is so the council would be advised of their work, that they would feel obligated to spend, say over, if they're having to spend over an hour on something that one council member's asking Legal to do, you might have another council member asking them to do something that's totally different. And part of this is to try to govern and tighten that relationship. And so while they're not. try to govern and tighten that relationship, and so while they're not a city employee, if we continue contracted legal services, we wanna have better administrative policies in place.
So Mayor, just as a, a last, then I'll end this, uh, so a policy manual for the city council, um, beyond the state statutes, is there anything really there, I mean, it's pretty limited what we have on the website to look at, but that type of behavior by council members directed towards legal counsel and the hours that might be spent and, and charged back, where is that, uh, where is that language located so that the council doesn't get, uh, go awry? Otherwise, you know, it's just the legal counsel that's telling them, hey, I can only do so much.
Well, I think that's partly why administrative, um, administrative policy is put in place. Of course, if, if Mr. Hilty is aware of legal requirements they have, um, I, I think this council's done a good job, but I mean, you might have a council member call and engage and say, listen, um, we wanna get rid, we want, we don't wanna comply with the wastewater requirements on phosphorus, for example, can you, can your firm start researching that? I don't know how Mr. Hilty would respond, I'm guessing he'd probably express some caution, I don't wanna put some words and say, hey, this is a matter that probably requires, um, this, but if, the, the guidelines, again, are not a corrective measure towards any fallout, it, it simply puts guidelines in place so that if something goes astray, you can, we can call, you can call your colleagues, the mayor, and, and council together with legal, know what the parameters and the boundaries are, just so that the etiquette and decorum and, and how time is spent chasing down things that council might engage, that, that's just one example that's addressed on here.
Thank you.
So Mayor, so has Caldwell contacted at all, as far as, you know, I know they contract with the same, same legal firm, but...
No, I, I did it, and part of that was out of respect for the...
They, they haven't done an R, I'm just talking about on the language here, on RFP, they haven't done this type of thing that you know of in the...
Haven't engaged Caldwell's, Caldwell's R, RFP, no, and plus, I, part of it is due to the nature also that they contract our current legal services, so I...
I'm aware of that, I'm just...
Yeah.
So who did, I'm just curious, and, wait, you got a couple municipalities, who, who did you talk to besides Glenn Rimby?
I, to try to reconstruct the whole list, I, I'm probably mixing cities that have contracted with, as well as in-house, but obviously, was examining a lot of cities.
Like Corvallis, I mean, I'm just curious, what...
Yeah, up and down, I mean, um, Meridian, um, which they have in-house, Twin Falls, Pocatello, Idaho Falls, um, recent cities that did do an RFP, 'cause they contract, Eagle, for example, Eagle did one early, uh, this year.
That's what I'm looking for.
I don't know if you're familiar with Eagle's RFP, or how, how familiar, I mean, Eagle had an RFP earlier, McCall had an RFP recently, about a year ago, Mount Home, I believe, also was one that I consulted, so I tried to, um, consult, yeah, cities of different sizes, so.
I apologize for the...
And I'm sorry, I know that's more an RFP discussion, but yeah, no, no, you're, you're fine.
That's my fault. I got you on the rabbit trail, sorry.
Okay.
I think there was a motion and a second.
There's no more questions, I'll just...
Was there, okay, I believe there was a motion and a second, is that correct? I think there is, okay, so is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Brunner?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
Bauer? Mucci?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Item 520 on the agenda is an action item, this is, uh, the resolution implementing the changes in domestic water, and I believe, um, Debbie, do you need to read this, or can we just approve the resolution with the no rate increase? I'm sorry.
I don't need to read it, um, I don't have to read resolutions.
Okay, so do we have, so this is a mo, is the, are the resolutions written, or are they pending being written? I don't even...
Mayor, the, the resolutions were written, um, and, and they will need to be amended.
Based on?
Well, at least two of them, I think, uh, will need to be, um, revised, so, um...
Can we just authorize the mayor to sign the amended resolution stating...
I think so, consistent with, 'cause you already took formal action on it, so I, I think you've kind of already done items 520 through 523, so I think maybe just a, a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the amended resolutions, consistent with the motions that were previously placed on the record.
I like that. That was perfect, and it's been, uh, so moved and seconded, and is there any discussion? Do you need me to repeat what the actual motion, what the, the increases were? We got it? Roll call.
I didn't hear who was first or second.
I made the motion, Haverfield.
Okay, so I was the second.
Okay.
Dar, Darrell was the second.
Thank you. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mucci?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
So that takes care of action item 520, 21, 22, and 23, that is the end of our new business, and at that, we'd move to unfinished business, of which we have three items. So the first one, and all three of these are requests to pass under suspension of rules, and the first one, 71, is annexation and zoning to RS8 for a new home, um, at 2413 Sunny Ridge for Travis Adams, representing Ironwood Homes.
An ordinance determining that certain lands commonly known as 2413 and/or 2415 Sunny Ridge Road comprising approximately 1.11 acres, more or less, lay continues to the city limits of the city of Nampa, county of Canyon, state of Idaho, and that said land should be annexed into the city of Nampa, Idaho, as part of the RS8 zone, declaring said lands by proper legal description be described below to be part of the city of Nampa, Canyon County, Idaho, directing the city engineer and the planning and zoning director to add said property to the official maps of the city of Nampa, Idaho, repealing all ordinances, resolutions, orders, and parts thereof in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date, and directing the clerk of the city of Nampa to file a certified copy of the ordinance and the map of the area to be annexed with Canyon County, state of Idaho, and Idaho State Tax Commission pursuant to Idaho Code, section 63215.
Mayor Kling, I'll make the motion to pass the ordinance as read under suspension of rules.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mucci?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
Item 72 on the agenda is a zoning map amendment from single-family residential planned unit to RS6 at 1400 West Roosevelt Avenue for Katie Deal.
An order to the city of Nampa, Idaho, to provide RS6 zone designation for certain lands commonly known as 1400 and 1402 Roosevelt Avenue comprising approximately 5.05 acres, more or less, determining that said zoning is in the best interest of the citizens and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city of Nampa, Idaho, rezoning said property from RS6 PUD, with a required property, providing for recording and instructing the city engineer to designate said property for RS6 zone on the official zoning maps of the city, of zoning map and other areas of the Nampa city, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and repealing all ordinances, rules, and regulations and parts thereof in conflict herewith.
Mayor Kling, I'll make the motion to pass the ordinance as read under suspension of rules.
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Brunner?
Yes.
Mucci?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
Item 73 is an action item, this is annexation and zoning to RS7 for Heron Ridge subdivision at Zero West Greenhurst, located on the southeast corner of Middleton and Greenhurst, and this is for Schultz Development.
An order determining that certain lands located to the southeast of the intersection of Greenhurst Road and Middleton Road comprising approximately 39.291 acres, more or less, lay continues to the city limits of the city of Nampa, county of Canyon, state of Idaho, and that said land should be annexed into the city of Nampa, Idaho, as part of the RS7 zone, declaring said lands by proper legal descriptions as described below be part of the city of Nampa, Canyon County, Idaho, and directing the city engineer and planning and zoning director to add said property to the official maps of the city of Nampa, Idaho, repealing all ordinances, resolutions, orders, and parts thereof in conflict herewith, providing an effective date, and directing the clerk of the city of Nampa to file a certified copy of the ordinance and the map of the area to be annexed with Canyon County, state of Idaho, and the Idaho State Tax Commission pursuant to Idaho Code, section 63215.
Who would like to make the motion?
So moved, Mayor. Suspension rules.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call.
Who is the second?
Dean Mucci.
Thank you. Brunner?
Yes.
Levi?
No.
Haverfield?
Yes.
Bauer? Mucci?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
That concludes our agenda, before we, uh, have a motion to adjourn, I, I do owe council an apology for losing my cool, I am so sorry.
You don't need to apologize.
Well, I, I do apologize, I do, it's been so doggone hard, and we've worked so hard, that, but you know what, we did not present to you what you needed, and I want you to always ask questions, because you, our citizens deserve it, and so you should always ask questions, and we just need to, I need to ensure that we have the answers that you need, uh, to the questions, so I apologize.
And, and, are these off, by the way? And just, just as a clarification, my philosophy...
I think we're still on...
Well, anyway, that's what, I'll, I'll just say.